Please call the roll.
Winters. Dalling.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Martin. Bowman.
Here.
Dalling.
Here.
Beer.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
All right, we have a forum. Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which were concerned, reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at C council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 19th, 2021, and approval of claims in the amount of $99,806.57 and payroll expenses of $188,251.22. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I was hoping to table and discuss some of the items that were in the city minutes for the previous meeting if that was possible.
We will just pull item A out and cut. Item A will move to item five on the agenda. Motion to approve item B.
Motion to approve item B.
Have motion from Mr. Sherman, second from Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda, item B. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Dalling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Dalling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
All right, item five is consideration and action on items removed from the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 19th, 2021.
My hope was to bend Greg's ear on some talk that he spoke about at the last meeting, the AHA audit. I did not know if it was discussed during that audit, the nearly 10 million that remain outstanding but are excluded from the authority's balance sheets. I did not know if that item was addressed. It's listed in the current Alva Hospital audit, June 30th, 2020 to 2019.
Whoa, I'm not sure. What was your concern about?
An item that was listed in the board.
Which item? On the council, on the council minutes?
It would have been the previous minutes that Greg spoke upon on the AHA. He mentioned the Alva Authority audit.
Okay, is there anything inaccurate in the minutes of the meeting?
Then I guess I've misunderstood.
Okay, this isn't to discuss those items. This is only if there's a problem with the agenda itself.
Oh, an inaccuracy in the agenda itself.
Was there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and second by Mr. Stelling to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held July 19th, 2021. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Dalling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dalling?
Yes.
All right, item six, reports from staff. Alva Tourism Tax Commission meeting held on July 21st, 2021. Mr. Martin isn't here this evening. I didn't come prepared to speak on that. I'd say we just pick that up at the next meeting. Item B is the sanitation committee meeting held on July 22nd, 2021. I've been to so many meetings, I can't. Is that you, Randy?
Yep.
Okay.
It's pretty much same as all this. We discussed poly carts and then the problems that they would solve and hopefully at some time in near future, we can start ordering them. We're still having issues with the small trash trucks, air lane maintenance problems, air lane, so that was pretty much the length of the basis of the meeting.
How many poly carts are we short from completing the handout?
About 1,800.
How many do we hand out?
About, just I think about 1,100, maybe 1,000.
I believe we've budgeted this year for trying to complete that air lane, but usually items come up that talk about other issues that once we get the poly cart in place, that will solve a lot of issues that exist now, so.
Any other questions regarding the sanitation committee meeting? Item C is the Alva Planning Commission meeting held on July 26th, 2021. We do have a couple items on our agenda relevant to the planning commission meeting, but I want to go ahead and report that there is, we really have to get to work with that land use task force and get the strategy in place and get our zoning redone for our community. We're getting too many requests for individual zoning changes that aren't, you know, that are relevant to one or two people and not relevant to the entire community. And our zones need to be in place to benefit the entire community. That is something that it kind of got tabled when COVID started happening, but we were real close to having a plan finished for that, and we need to go ahead and get that finished. And so we'll be working with that land use task force to get that wrapped up to the planning commission, because the planning commission is having trouble making decisions on the requests they get because our zoning is outdated. And so we really need to get that finished, and I'm going to make that a priority for the planning commission moving forward. And I'd say the other items are on the agenda, so. Okay, any questions, council? Item D is the Alva Hospital Authority meeting held on July 27th, 2021. Mr. Bowman?
To answer Taylor's question, the financials seem to be okay. There's a lot of money with COVID that is either not spent, can't be spent, that they're trying, and you may have to help me on this one, but you'd have to get with an accountant. The understanding was all of the audit stuff came back okay when it all balanced out, and that's basically all I know on that. In fact, I've never, I don't know that I've heard of an issue with the audit other than the money, of the COVID money that doesn't work.
I would say the best place to direct that question is the hospital authority. It's really not anything that any of us sitting at this table are privy to the details on, and the hospital authority chairman or the CEO would be probably the best place to direct those questions.
So I guess just to kind of get an umbrella answer, it doesn't sound, was there any direct discussion upon that and it's excluded from the balance sheets?
My understanding is clean audit and it was approved.
It's clean audit. There is money there that they can't spend yet because of the direction of who, again, you'd have to talk to an accountant.
And that's what. I guess my understanding of the clean audit is it also came back with two material findings, which is the highest ranking of findings that an auditor can ask you to address.
Yeah, that's not going to be something that we're going to discuss in this meeting.
Other than that, Burke and Burke are still slated to move into town. They're planning on combining the physician's clinic with that, and construction has started across the street. They had some billing issues with the new billing contractor for the hospital. What they did was put a stay on any collections because of overlaps. In fact, I was one of the overlaps, so I got to talk to that. So they put a stay on any collections, but the collections that they've been doing have been really good. Nursing home, their financial, nursing home, homestead and the hospital, their financials are good. The nursing home is working with the State Department of Health, planning community to replacing the HVAC system in the nursing home. And the ODOT vehicle grants have been, or working on applying for to see if we can get a new vehicle for the facilities up there, and that's really good.
Is there any discussion of why the, I was told we're losing a third provider out there, the doctor. Is there any discussion of why he's decided to leave?
Not. Which doctor you referred to?
Is it Gilbert?
Well, he, we didn't have that meeting, so no to answer your question. You've got to realize, this is 30 days.
30 days.
Our meeting is tomorrow, so anyway. I've heard rumors myself.
Well, I heard that as a board member resigned.
There has been a board member resigned, so I will be looking to fill a position on board, so. Any other questions regarding the July 27th meeting? Thank you. The Alva Public Library Board meeting on August 2nd, 2021. Mr. Dalling?
Yeah, the book checkouts were just under 2,000 for the library with 745 eBooks and audiobooks or e-magazines. 244 items of our physical collection with 38 materials were deselected from the collection. The library continues to have good success, and I have personally heard of people who participate in the libraries, I think it's called the Little Explorers and the Weekly Activity Bags for summer readers, and they have good success. They are waiting, it looks like, until the start of school to determine how much they'll be able to go forward with that as school starts. Director also submitted the state reports for some financial aid, kind of just going over some of the stuff that we've talked about in previous council meetings and then trying to add some stuff that they've been waiting for a long time. Wild Beautiful, the pillars and stuff for the second level are a little bit easy for kids to slip through if they're not being washed well, so they've looked at adding some Plexiglas and options, but it seems like kind of a long-term dream that they've had for a while. I think the most important thing coming up for the library would be the August 22nd book sale, and that's when that starts and that will continue for, I think, a week or two at the very least. And then we were, they had stopped their fulfilling of a part-time position in the hopes of kind of reevaluating it to see if we could save some money on the staff and go and kind of forward, to see if they can switch down rules to cover some stuff, because they are predicting a rise back in COVID later this month, so they want to be very cautious about filling roles that they might not need with the youth library. And I believe that they have had a new person kind of starting, Amy Ryerson, who will be helping out there. And apparently Amy has had, has worked in the library for the last five years, and she is taking the lead to development of, development of a program for the youngest librarian patrons and for the after-school programs, kind of looking forward with that. They also are glad to announce that they'll soon be able to launch their photo and some video editing platform, along with some quick walkthrough books to kind of help people do that. I think they're holding off on some software to help screen out indecent images that people might be attempting to edit with that software, just because it's a public library, so anybody, not just residents of Alva, can use it. And they had their, a while ago on August 14th, they, the Lisa Williams, the public author who's from Alva, had their book showing, so hopefully in the next board meeting, we'll hear how well that went.
What was the date of the book sale? Sorry?
Oh, yeah, no, August 23rd.
Thank you, sir.
Council, any questions for Mr. Dalling? Thank you. Next item is the Alva Arena Authority meeting held on August 3rd, 2021. I don't have anything on that. We do have an agenda item here in a little bit regarding the Pitt district, and so we'll just go on. Item G is the Alva Regional Airport Commission meeting held on August 9th. We discussed, I don't remember. There was.
The contract for CEC.
Oh, yes, okay. So we did have our, the airport goes out for bid for engineers every five years. The engineering firm that we are currently with, or at the time we're with, they lost all their staff that had any aviation background. And the staff actually went to a complete other firm, all of them went basically to the same firm. And in talking with CEC, Angelica talked with them, and they had told us that it would be difficult for them to continue to maintain our account. And so there was an option considered to have the engineering agreement transferred over to Park Hill, and in doing so, that allows us to keep our current schedule with our apron project that's coming up, as well as our current engineering team. And so as far as the individuals are concerned, there was discussion about long-term, if that was going to be what we wanted to continue with, and that's still up in the air, but at least for the project that is underway with the apron, we will be with Park Hill, and we may see how that goes, and if that goes well, we'll be able to consider continuing on with Park Hill for the duration of the agreement, or go out for another bid on engineering firms. But that was the largest part of the discussion.
CD renewal.
We did discuss the CD renewal, and the board wanted to renew the CD, and since then, the treasurer went out for bids and they all came back equal. So we just left it with the same bank and renewed it there, so.
When does the five years normally run out on the engineering?
We're about halfway right now.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
They did do our ODL omnidirectional approach lighting system with the, with CEC, and they wrapped up the planning phases for the apron project. And so the individuals that are, that will be retaining through Park Hill are the same individuals that worked on those projects with this. Happy to answer any other questions. Next item is the Alva Recreation Complex Board meeting on August 11th, 2021. Mr. Sherman?
So the primary part of the meeting was on the updates on the roof replacement and the schedule for items being delivered. It looks like that's going to be a little bit delayed because of delivery materials is six to eight weeks out, which is pretty much any construction industry right now, it looks like. The gym floor was refinished since last meeting, and it looks amazing. And soccer and flag football signups are going on right now, and so if you haven't got your kids signed up yet, they are looking for coaches for six to seven. They got like 50 something kids and two coaches now, so.
Big soccer team.
I mean, it's either going to be, we're playing 11-on-11 with little kids, or something different's going to have to change, but I think that was pretty much it for the ARC minutes, other than just routine meeting stuff, so if anybody has any questions?
Any questions for Brandon? All right, will you give the finance committee report?
I primarily discussed the purchasing of some meters in preparation for winter. So just, winter is always hard on meters, and we're still replacing some of those ones that are, that are damaged. And then we also discussed the upcoming CDs for tourism and special library and the reinvestment of those, and we'll get rates back on those here in the next week or so, so.
Any questions regarding the finance committee report? Next item is mayor's report. I do have a few things to share this evening. One of them, you'll see in front of your seat on the desk is the annual conference for the Oklahoma Municipal League. It is coming up here in a couple weeks, and I would encourage all of you to think about attending this. It is a great way to get a lot of information in a short period of time and hopefully come up to speed on anything city-related. There are cities represented from all across the state, from a couple hundred people to, you know, Oklahoma City and Tulsa. So all sizes of communities are represented, and there's, it's always a good place to go and see how other places are doing things that we're dealing with, and there is a lot of good networking. As informative as the sessions are, the networking is really good as well, so I would encourage you to consider attending. If you do want to attend, just get with Angelica, and she'll get you registered and make all the arrangements, so.
Can I add to that real quick? I think I'm the only council member, maybe Randy's been recently, but if you guys, if you guys look on that very back page, it has a schedule of the classes that they're going to have, and those are always amazing.
Honestly, it'd be good if there were a few of us there, and we could divide and conquer, because some of them are at the same times that, you know, we would, you know, want to attend for our community.
Like 5G implementation and everything from learning about splash pads to cybersecurity to, it's, it's really, really good information, and it is directed at smaller Oklahoma communities, so.
And the other part, I mean, they're really good sessions. I mean, they'll discuss things, you can ask questions and stuff pertaining to our size, and it's a lot of good information there, that you can see.
And you don't have to go for the entire time. You can go just for one particular day also, so keep that in mind if maybe you can't go for the entire event. We'd still love for everyone to go.
I will mention that they, the board asked me if I would sing the National Anthem, and I politely declined, but I did ask Alva Goldbug, class of 95, Aaron Hansel, to come sing the National Anthem for us, and so he will be singing the National Anthem at the conference to open things up. I'm kind of excited about that, and the, and of course, I've got, I am on the OML board, so I'll be in meetings and whatnot throughout that. The OML board did meet last, earlier this month, and they talked about several things that I think relevant to us, is that the ARP funding had been approved to be disseminated, so at that time, we were looking at 30 to 60 days to receive our check. Now we're probably in that 30 to 45 day range that we'll be anticipating getting our check. It will be split up over a couple years. There's still so much kind of up in the air that I can't give you a lot of details, but it looks as though the city will be receiving approximately $800,000 over the course of two years, which can be, we believe will be able to be used for infrastructure, water sewer, that kind of thing. Broadband might be an issue, something we can use it for as well. But I, as we consider how we may want to use those funds, we also need to know that federal infrastructure bill was passed through Congress, and I'm fairly certain the president signed it. It was in, so there will be a lot more opportunity for infrastructure development with that, including broadband, and so hopefully, you know, those are, the way I look at federal tax dollars, we, they're going to give them to somebody else if they don't give them back to us, so might as well get what we can, and at least get some good out of our federal tax dollars that leave the community. I will tell you that for me, I did attend the freshman welcome at NWSU, and this year they've asked me to also teach one of the Ranger Connection classes, so I'll be doing that, and my whole mission is to get those students oriented to our community so that they want to stay here and not only finish their education, but maybe find a long-term home in this, in our community, so I'm pretty excited about that. Next week, I'll be speaking to the president's leadership class, and beyond that, just some events coming up. We are pretty excited that it looks like we're going to have an in-person car show in the middle of next month, and then homecoming will be the next month for Northwestern, and so it'll be good to have events going on. Two of our biggest events that hadn't happened in, you know, two years now are going to be back, and so that's going to be really good for our community. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you. Next item is the city business manager's report.
Mine will be pretty short, as I've been out for most of the month. Last week, we had pre-construction meetings for all of the projects that we have coming up. Brandon talked about the roof project for the rec center. We're hoping to get that started as soon as materials are ordered. The 90-day completion date is November 21st, or no, excuse me, November 14th, I'm sorry. However, we are expecting delays in that project, just knowing the materials are six to eight weeks out, and windows were 12 weeks out, so we anticipate that will take longer than the 90 days the contract allows for, so we'll have to do change orders for that and discuss what that looks like. We also had the pre-construction meeting for the water line up on Flynn Street to add the two additional fire hydrants for the high school area so that the art facility could be occupied. Chief Miller has issued a temporary CO to the school to allow the students to start being in that building, knowing that the fire hydrants will be installed. That completion date, we're looking at October 23rd. Once again, I know there was some question about, I know they have materials already staged there, but they're waiting on some materials still, so if there's a delay in receiving those materials, those might move out a little bit further, but we're hoping that one moves along on time. And then the offset well that we are drilling in the well field, we are planning to start that project. They're going to drill a test hole, which is the very first step of the project, on September 7th, so our completion date on that one will be December 6th. Once again, everything goes according to plan. So materials are, at this point in time, very hard to get, and we're just taking it a step at a time to see how those things progress. We did get the water line project down by the well field, that mile of line, we did get that laid. We'll talk about that a little bit later, and the utility is already, but it is completed. The tests have come back complete, and I think we are just waiting on DEQ now to say that we can go ahead and turn that line back on, and then we'll have that line, that third additional line coming back to town again. So hopefully that will go smoothly, and we get the final okay on that. The only other thing I have is, staff has been working, myself and staff this last week that I've been back in the office, to prepare for our annual audit, so we're a little bit behind. The petition audit took up a lot of my time at the beginning of this calendar year, and so we're just now working to wrap up our audit for fiscal year 1920. The auditors will be on site next week and are planning to meet with our finance committee at least once, hopefully twice during that timeframe, so should move that process forward. The petition audit, I haven't heard anything since I've been back, but I know that when I originally had talked with them, they were looking at November, December for a long time. I think the reports have all been written. They're just waiting for the different levels of approval before everything is finalized, and that would come back to us, so that's my understanding, and I haven't heard anything different. Are there any questions I can answer?
So did all the water line pass the pressure test?
Yes, it did.
Will Vince, as the roof construction, how much will that affect for the ARC, the roof construction, how much will that affect events that can go on inside?
So in talking with Tier One, the company that's going to be doing that, they are planning on doing the gymnasium section first, pulling the vents and levers that are coming out there and replacing that section of roof first so that our basketball season can move forward appropriately, knowing that we're going to have construction in other areas and we may just have to work around that, but that way, we hope to have the least amount of disruption to our events.
But not necessarily so much disruption that there'll be a time, where there will be no events?
At this time, that's, that's what we're looking at. We're hoping for that, as long as everything goes according to scheduling.
They are going to protect the floor, right?
Yes, yes, they are.
Any other questions for Angelica? Thank you. Next item is item number eight, or excuse me, item number seven, remarks and answers by citizens. We do have a lot of people here today, but our, our standard process is that if you have something to contribute, it's not a discussion with the council, but you can say your piece, and we'll give you two minutes if you'll come in front of the podium and state your name, and we'll give two minutes per speaker. Randy, can you do our time for us? Would anybody like to make any public remarks? All right, next item on the agenda.
I'm here. Thank you guys for having us tonight. I'm in regard to one of the zoning changes that is being brought before you, I believe, and visiting with all the members of the planning. In visiting with all the members of the Planning Commission that I have, they let me know that in their doings, they're trying to get away from any commercial zoning being taken place, taking place in a residential area, and the property that I have is zoned commercial. We don't use it in that fashion, it's used residentially, but if you allow the next person next to me to say, well, because there's this commercial, that's what ours should be too, and change their zoning, where does that stop? The next person then next to them can say that, and the person next to them as well. When people buy property in residential areas, they don't assume that they're going to have commercial endeavors moved in next door to them. And that being said, you know, the obstruction of the view, the obstruction of the flow of that alleyway back there that's already very, very narrow, there is a business at the end of that street that does use that. Our renter and several others use that as their sole means to get into their parking for their residence, and so we just would not like to have that happen, because where does it ever stop? And like I said, the Planning Commission says they're moving towards not allowing commercial endeavors in residential areas anymore anyway, and so we would not like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was your name?
Hala Simon. Thank you.
Any other comments?
My name's Tom Strike. I'm the one trying to get the, sorry, the, the property switched over from residential to commercial. I've got a shop up on the boulevard that I've been renting for 20-plus years now with Arden, not leaving that position. I'm just trying to build a big enough building to make an overflow. I get a car done, it's got a bunch of money in it with a new paint job, I can't park it outside. I'm having a hard, hard time coming up with places to park it. There's not a lot of people that has a, like, climate control type business that you can rent, and it's just more money out of our pocket, you know, not only me, but the customer. And I'm trying to build a building for an overflow, and we don't even have a, a garage at our house, so with Oklahoma's weather, we don't even have nowhere to put our cars. So, I want to have somewhere that I could park my own personal vehicle if, Lord knows, a hailstorm comes up or a tornado or whatever. And we're actually gonna move a, a big tree out of our backyard that's been hit by lightning a couple of times. It's on the verge of cracking out a giant, land him off of it, could land on our house. We're trying to do the due diligence. I went around to all the people in the 300-foot radius, and everyone that I could talk to that was in the house and not, you know, that was living there, that owned the houses, I've got a list of everybody, they signed every one of them that I could get a hold of. There was a couple that, I knew the people and I just had a hard time getting a hold of them, couldn't find them. The lady at the vanilla bean, I talked to her this morning for the first time. She said she was gonna be here, but she didn't make it, it looks like. But, she seemed to be okay with someone trying to better themselves, but she just didn't really want to know, what, she didn't want to sign it at the time, because she wanted to know everybody else's opinion about it, and that's why I went around to each house, because I wanted to know what everybody thought too. And I had no, just one, I've had nobody talk anything bad about it. I keep care of our place and keep it mowed up, and as far as traffic.
I'm gonna, we're gonna have to cut you off. We can hit your two minutes.
All right.
But, thank you. Anybody else like to make a comment? All right. Move on to item number eight, the presentation of Kids &amp; Cops Retired Chief Gary Sanderson's Scholarship. Chief Warcutt?
Okay, so a little bit about our, our scholarship. Started in 2019, so we presented it for the first time in front of City Council last year, so this will be our second time to do that. This year, we had, I can't remember if it was six or eight applicants, and we had, we had a board get together this year, because we had so many different people apply, and that board consisted of two city council members, myself, and then four people from the community. In that process, we selected our applicant, which was Morgan Brooke Martin, and today we would like to present this to her.
Thank you, congratulations. That is one of the great things about our police department and the leadership that we've had for, for years now, and so we appreciate Chief Sanderson for his leadership and inspiration, and Chief Warcutt for carrying on some legacy, and for you applying for the scholarship and, and taking it even one step further, so thank you. Next item is discussion and action to approve. Okay. Ordinance number 2021-002, and ordinance naming joint increment district number one, City of Alva and Woods County, and establishing the date for the creation thereof, ratifying and confirming the actions, recommendations, and findings of the review committee and the City of Alva Planning Commission with regard to joint increment district number one. City of Alva and Woods County ratifying and confirming the action of the City of Alva in enacting ordinance number 2018-003 that approved and adopted the Alva Arena Economic Development Project Plan, established the project area and established joint increment district number one, City of Alva and Woods County, ratifying and confirming the action of Woods County in enacting the resolution that approved and adopted the Alva Arena Economic Development Project Plan, established the project area and established the joint increment district number one, City of Alva and Woods County, ratifying and confirming the Alva Arena Authority, City of Alva and Woods County, as the entities authorized to carry out and administer the project plan, including administration of the tax apportionment fund and the use of the increment revenues for the payment of certain project costs, directing continuing apportionment, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency. I'll point out that Mr. Penningham did not write this agenda item, but he does approve. It, this is in regard to the tax increment district that was established back in 2018 for the benefit of the Alva Arena Authority and the development of an eventual arena. The city council did approve that tax increment district. We do have an opportunity for questions in, in a second for clarifying matters, but it's my understanding that we are not creating anything new as much as we are putting a start date on the, the district and allowing them to move forward with the plans that had already been approved. So, that is primarily the, the issue that we are considering here, and with that, I would either entertain a motion or discussion.
I was gonna ask, can you kind of go into how the ad valorem tax will work for the residents inside that TIP district? Will it, and just kind of add some greater, greater clarification there, it, will it raise their property values as it values, or will it just take away from what they, their current property values are assessed at? And then how will that, I guess, in turn, affect the amount of tax from the ad valorem tax that the schools are receiving?
Well, there, we've got Mr. Holder too. Mr. Holder, did you catch all that?
Could you add some greater detail on the ad valorem tax and how it will affect the property owners within, inside that TIP district?
Did you, were you provided this document?
Uh, yes.
And did you have a chance to go through it?
I did, I.
Okay, that, that would explain it very, very well. It does not raise property taxes, Taylor.
Oh, but it takes away from what existing there in District.
No, sir, it does not take away what's existing. It only takes the amount that is incrementally raised by, in the project area, by additional buildings or increased ad valorem for the period of 25 years.
Okay, so it takes away from the things that are added to that TIP district?
Okay, there is nothing that's taken away.
It is, okay.
So, this document explains it really well, and, and I'm happy to go into it page by page if you want to, but it, it explains it very well. And again, tonight, we're not doing anything to set, that's already been taken care of. The only thing we're doing is the start date. We can't change anything that's already been, this, this, the county commissioners and the city council have already set the plans in motion. The only thing you're doing tonight is initiating the start.
The start date when that.
That's correct.
When things are new.
That's correct. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat, and when we collect the sales tax from that increment district, what, are we, are we collecting that tax from events that are held there or from sales that happen inside the increment district? I guess I'm specifically curious about the line where it says, "The sales tax increment from the increment district shall be..."
Right.
Yeah.
Sales tax is generated primarily at the event center, but inside the dis, inside that district, primarily at the events.
And that 2% is in addition to?
So, it's 1%. It's, the city's portion is 2, and you, and 1% of that based on, say, that, on the people that come from outside of this zip code. That, again, is also explained very well in this document.
But that doesn't include Walmart? I mean, walk inside that district?
Does not. It's inside that district, but it's mainly the events at the event center.
So, is it expected to increase property values, and that, that's how many?
Well, so, property values, if there is a building that is built within the TIP district, those type, those property taxes that are increased by that, by that additional structure, that is the increment that will go up. That's, that's why they call it incremental. So, is it to raise ad valorem tax within the TIP district, which I think was your question? Is that correct? No.
Well, I just thought, it's just if somebody builds a structure inside that district, then the tax generated off that structure is gonna go to?
For the first 25 years.
25 years.
And if the property values go up, anything that goes up, and we certainly hope they do go up, then, then that portion would go into that district as well, for the first 25 years. Or until $12 million is generated out of it.
So, that increase won't go to the county or to the school system? It'll go to?
There's percentage of, it remains in the school system, it's 20% of that, still goes to the school. Again, we are not raising taxes. Understood?
I guess we're, we're promising future taxes to a different endeavor.
Promising future taxes?
From that one to a future endeavor.
Within the district.
I didn't know if that would necessarily cut off a developer who wanted to develop in that area, because.
I'm not sure how it would.
I guess I'm not sure either.
Are there any other questions?
What is the setting of the start date? What is our, we're just voting to say that we can set a start date, or are we voting that the start date is X? I'm confused on that part of it, just trying to get clarification.
This, yeah, I think it says in there, this is, this starts the starting.
So, it's starting today?
We're waiting for.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm.
And that's, that's where your ad valorems are examined, that's where the starch from.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Todd, and for all the work that the Arena Authority's put into this up to this point. I know it's been a, a great amount of effort, and we appreciate you and the rest of your group, and, and thank you for answering questions this evening.
Nothing to do with me, we have a great team. It's gonna benefit Alva, Retired Lives, and Woods County.
Quick question before a motion is made. Do we need to make a motion to actually say that the start date is today?
I think when we declare.
Because it doesn't read like, it, it doesn't say in here that the start date is of the date, but I'm just, I'm just wanna make sure that we're.
It's the date of the implementation of the ordinance, and by declaring an emergency, we would need another motion after the first motion to declare an emergency, and that would set it up today.
If we do not declare the emergency, it'd be set up for 30 days from now.
Back to publication.
So, does one motion cover the both ordinances?
No.
Because it's 002 and not 003.
No, that's, that's referencing the 2018.
Oh, referencing, okay, sorry. I wouldn't.
So, go ahead.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-002.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve ordinance number 2021-002. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
All right, motion carries. The next item is declaring an emergency, then. Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to declare emergency on that item.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Stelling, a second by Mr. Bowman, to declare an emergency. Is there any further discussion?
Why are you, why are we declaring an emergency? Just to start it today, or, I mean, is that, is there something that, that Arena Authority needs for that to start today, or is it just because we can start it today? That's my question.
Is the reason to put it off?
Todd, are you still here?
I don't, they can't proceed until that's.
That's what I'm wondering, exactly, I mean, if it's.
No, we can proceed, we can proceed, but if.
We're just, it's time. We're ready.
Is your question, is there a need for it to be before the 30 days are out?
Yeah, I mean, if we're just declaring an emergency just to declare an emergency and get it started, or is there an actual need for us to declare an emergency to?
And just start 30 days.
Start 30 days earlier. I don't know, I'm just, I didn't want it to hang anything up, but I also just wanted clarification.
You originally approved it a couple of years ago, we're ready to start.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Sherman?
No.
Dowling?
No.
Beer?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Well, we have a tie. By ordinance, may or may not tie, I vote to declare an emergency. Thank you all. Item 10 is discussion and action to engage Angel Johnston of Blazing Game PC to conduct the fiscal year 2020-2021 City of Alva and Alva Trust Authority audits, when an amount not to exceed $19,850. This was on our last monthly meeting agenda, and after that meeting, I, I took the questions from the council members and went to both Mr. Kumdi with the peer review accounting firm, as well as Mr. Angel with our accounting firm, our auditing firm, and I did send an email out to council members indicating the nature of, of the findings on the peer review, and have not received any other feedback from council since that time, but I have asked, and Angelica and I have asked Mr. Angel to join us remotely if there are any questions that the council may have regarding this agenda item.
I guess if he doesn't mind reclarifying what you specified in that email, I'd not get that, but I think my email's been wrong for a while for you, which we might need to correct.
Okay, we can't hear you, Chris. We, we, we did try this out earlier, and we had sounded everything.
Hear me now?
Yes. Can you start over for us, Chris?
Uh, yeah. I, I haven't seen the email file of exactly what the peer reviewers said, so I'm not sure if everything's out there, but in the peer review, there were three findings related to our peer review. Now, I'll say this on our behalf, is we've gone decade without any comments, so this is fairly unusual, but at the same time, they're enhancing the oversight, particularly in the single audit area. Single audit being. Single audit being if you have a situation where you have grants over $750,000, and they're being very particular, the federal government is wanting to assure, get assurances that the audit process is giving them the assurances they need, the grants are being administered and, and spent for the appropriate amount. So the primary comment that was actually in this report was related to the single audit. Now, the single audit on this particular situation was a school. I actually don't work on these schools, and so I might put out that all the work that was done, that was reviewed, that I did relating to municipalities had no comments. As a matter of fact, it didn't even have any comments that sometimes they'll give little recommendations, this might be something you want to think about, but they didn't have any recommendations at all on any of the municipalities. So it really, my partners that did work on this school, but the main issue was on the schools was you have to look at controls, you have to leave compliance, you document your risk, you decide, you know, what you're going to do and how that you're going to do. Well, there's a box on that matrix that makes you decide whether you're going to do testing or not, and we decided to do the testing in these certain areas. So we did the testing, but they did not mark the box saying they're going to do the testing. So in the end, the, the, one of the things they wanted to do on single audit is for the auditor to make the connection between their assessment of risk, their evaluation of controls, and tie that very specifically to the test you actually perform. So we actually did the testing, but didn't indicate that we had done the testing, or that we needed to do the testing. And so that was the primary thing, and, and so that was the, the primary recommendation that they had. There was also a couple of other things, actually in our file, there's a compliance supplement that the OMB, the Office of Management Budget puts out every so often, saying that we want these things to be looked at, and you're always supposed to have the latest supplements, and we get the latest supplements all the time, but we did make a copy of that and put it in with the audit. Matter of fact, just today, I downloaded a new supplement on an audit that I was working on, and on that, we have, I've actually been comparing it side by side with my previous supplement, and there really wasn't any changes that changed my testing, but now I've documented that, looked at the latest supplement, so that's in the file. Then they had one other recommendation on their schools that actually, on the schools they have, your audit has information, detailed information about pension funds, and in that we do a whole litany of testing that gives us assurance that these actuaries who are performing pension evaluations have made good assumptions and were able to follow those assumptions through, and the underlying data is appropriate. The schools do not actually have that disclosure in their report, but the school guys were said, well, you know, this might be some good information they put in there, so they put just the dollar amount in as a note, saying, hey, this is the amount that the school teachers' retirement system is underfunded. Well, it wasn't required, and the fact that they actually put that in there then meant they should have done all the testing that I did to make, limited that number, although they did refer to the fact that you can get this information at the state teacher's retirement system, and it was just supposed to be informative, which you actually can do that, if you do that, you have to actually change your opinion letter to say, we put this information in here, we had not audited it. So they had not, either put, un-audited audit, or just not put the information in at all. So on that one school, that was the, the issue in question. Since that time, we have actually sent the subsequent audits that had the same issues as far as predominantly the issue was on the single audits. We have actually resubmitted our subsequent single audits for them to look at, and there was no issues related to that, so, and we've actually contracted with another firm to just make sure again that we don't have any blind spots, and we're going to have them look over, at least spot check a few of our single audits this upcoming year, just to make sure there's not any blind spots out there that we're missing. So anyway, so that's the steps we're taking on that item, and that's what happened. So, you know, peer review is really a good thing, it's actually something that helps us see if we do have blind spots, and if there's anything that we can do better. So, you know, we don't really mind getting the information, and I think it's helpful to have it, so.
Any other questions? I will add Taylor for your, if you didn't get the email. Number one, we'll get your email address after the meeting. You did, okay. But Mr. Kundif in the peer review office or the accountants' office, he indicated basically what, what Chris has said in, in great detail, he, he summarized quite a bit more, but he added that Angel Blazing Game, Johnson Blazing Game, that he felt like they were a very reputable firm, that he didn't have, he wouldn't have any reservations with them conducting audits for any, you know, municipality or school district or, or anything in the future, so. I guess since I have reached out to a third, another auditor who has told me similar things about the peer review and that process. Any further questions or discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to engage Angel Johnson Blazing Game PC to conduct the 2020-2021 City of Alva and Alva Trust Authority audits for an amount not to exceed $19,850.
Senator.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Stelling to engage Angel Johnson Blazing Game PC for the 2021, 2020, 2021 audits not to exceed $19,850. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Beer?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item 11 is discussion in action. Oh, thank you, Chris. We appreciate you making time for us this evening, and like Angelica said, we'll see you next week.
All right, thank you.
Now we'll go on. 11 is discussion in action to open a checking account for the donation fund, the Alva Swimming Pool. We do have, if we have questions, we do have the chairman of that committee here with us this evening, if you have any questions, but the committee has already started working on generating private donations, and with that, it was discussed as being a good idea to have a separate checking account for which to receive and then to disseminate funds in the proper directions, and so that's why this agenda item is, is here. Finance committee did discuss this briefly today about having the account be an interest-bearing account so that it would further enhance the monies that are made available, and so we have that for your consideration. Blake, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, you did, right on it. This is very similar to what you just did, approved for the airport fund. We just want to make it as transparent as possible and see, all the money we have there, that is going towards the.
Will it be a local way?
What finance committee discussed this afternoon was that we would keep it in the same bank as our operating account, that way that the, it would just run more smoothly. Any other questions? All right, if there are any other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to open a checking account for the donation fund as well.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mr. Sherman to open a checking account for the donation fund, the swimming pool. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Blake. Item 12, discussion in action to assign the engineering contract with CEC. I talked about this at pretty great length in my report, but I'm happy to answer any other questions there might be. Assign contract with CEC Corporation to Park Hill Smith and Cooper, Inc. If there isn't any discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to sign, is there any contract with CEC Corporation to Park Hill Smith and Cooper Incorporated?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mr. Sherman to assign the contract with CEC Corporation to Park Hill Smith and Cooper, Inc. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 13 is discussion in action on the renewal of the annual software maintenance agreements with Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed $38,240.90. Mrs. Brady?
So this is a routine that we do annually. We generally approve this in the spring, but Tyler Technologies has changed the way that they are billing. If you recall, we had a, I want to say $12,000 item that we paid for Tyler Technologies in the spring, and that was to get us up to their current billing cycle, and now they're having everyone on the same billing cycle, so this will pay for a year. We had about two, a $2,500 increase from the last year, which is to be expected, it's our maintenance, our maintenance agreement. They, they handle any calls that we have or any questions that we have, or something's not functioning appropriately, or the way that we need it to, or we can't figure out what we need to do, we can call them, they offer annual support, and they make sure that all of our accounting software is up to date. I know Councilmember Dowling had asked me, you know, have we considered ever looking at a different program? I'm not opposed to doing that at some time in the future, I would say, wouldn't really be excited about doing it this year, just simply because we have a lot of other things going on, but we've been using the program for quite some time, it's a fairly common program that's used in other municipalities, but I, you know, I'm not opposed to looking at something in the future, but I would like to see this move forward for this current year.
If we were to look at another company, would it be where they would just maintain our software, or we'd have to try and buy new software?
We would have to buy new software, likely there would be some sort of fee, and honestly, there would likely be a similar type expense on an annual basis.
But the new software's, thought would be substantial cost.
Yes, yes, it would be.
My research on NCO, Tyler Technologies, they're pretty much on the forefront for municipal.
Yes.
HR, basically, right?
Yes. I mean, smaller towns and small, smaller municipalities may use something different, but for a municipality of our size and, and larger, this is very, a very common company that's used from municipalities.
How many employees do we have total in the city?
We, is that for the whole city or for?
Yep.
Um, it varies between, we have about 75 full-time employees and seasonal employees, it varies up to 100, depending on the time of year, what we have going on, we haven't had that many obviously this year, but, you know, just depending on what's going on. And then we have, we pay, you like the officials as well, and so that adds about 15 additional employees, so.
If there isn't any other discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to renew the annual software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed $38,240.90.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mr. Sherman to renew the annual software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies not to exceed $38,240.90. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 14 is discussion in action to approve a request to change the zoning from residential RGA to commercial neighborhood for the demolition of existing structures and construction of a 30 by 40-foot steel building for a commercial shop at Fort Choctaw. Truman Cookson, the owner, is requesting to rezone that property. It is, like the item in the agenda says, it is zoned residential, or excuse me, yes, it is zoned residential at this moment, but he is wanting to open up a, a commercial shop here in that area. Planning Commission, like I mentioned in my report, did not take action on this. By ordinance, we, city council hears the things that the committee, planning commission does not take action on, so it is in front of us at this time. I will say that once these things change, they're, they're changed, that is the zone. So it's in the middle of a residential area at this time. While the intentions of the current owner may be what they are, there is nothing to say that any other kind of commercial business might not be able to go into that, that location as well when we, when we do this. It does create a inconsistencies in the layout of our community, to where if we are trying to build up certain areas of the community for commercial operations, or make sure and try to revitalize other areas for neighborhoods and that sort of thing, whenever we put pockets in our community like this, it, it kind of puts a kink in things. Chief Miller, as far as the details regarding the, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do. I think I'm going to make it public here. So Tom and, and Mr. Cookson, just here a few seconds ago before, hour ago before this meeting, public apology to both you and Mr. Cookson. I was actually reading the zoning ordinance, and upon my recommendation, both of these properties that I requested them to do commercial neighborhood, well, I found within our 1970 building ordinance or zoning ordinance, it gives a definition what commercial neighborhood is, which I've never seen. So as the acting city inspector, and I don't deal with these codes a lot, it basically states in here, commercial neighborhood is made for, back in the day, they used to have grocery stores, neighborhood grocery stores, and that was the intent of commercial neighborhood. And so I told Mr. Strick and Mr. Cookson, recommendation on commercial neighborhood on it, and that's incorrect. It actually should be CI, not CN, and so I told them incorrectly, so I apologize for that. Don't know how this is going to affect this, but it's the wrong zoning on it that I told you to ask for.
He explained CI.
So CI is primarily for, let's see here, to accommodate administrative businesses, financial, general, or professional services, or services satisfying the needs of residents, businesses, industries, or other enterprises in urban areas and/or trade areas. These are very old, but you can also look at CS, commercial services in this situation. This ordinance book is dated 1971, is the last time, and it may, this may be from earlier times, but we're coming to find out in a lot of these zoning changes, and I'm kind of glad I found definitions within the book, which came along from the council asking me questions to dig into it. You know, I don't deal with this very often, but Councilman Winters had a lot of questions, Councilman Sherman asked some. Councilman Sherman asked some questions that made me dig into this a little bit more. If I would have found these in an earlier time, I would not have told you to do that as commercial neighborhood, but it specifically states for convenience stores, shopping within residential areas. And it just, it's wrong. It's incorrect, and that's my fault.
In your opinion, would, like, I know they've already filed a fee for that type of variance or whatever, but would a application for variance just cover more square footage have been probably more proper than actually going out of trade?
Commercial, the thing about commercial and coverage, you can build on your lot lines with commercial, unless you abut or join residential. So in this situation of Mr. Strick's and his property, there's three lots that are commercial neighborhood, which technically, after reading this, the vanilla bean's not zoned correctly because they're commercial neighborhood. So, and then they have a residence in between it, and then another residence. And this is becoming more and more popular every day as our zoning because we're not zoned correctly in a lot of areas, and there's more planning commission meetings, and you're going to see these more and more until you guys as a council decide to get that task force together and do a correct zoning of this town, or you're going to continue to see these issues all over Alba. And they come in every day, and this is our issue that we're faced with. So, you know, I don't know where we moved from here. This information literally came from a question by a council member that I was trying to get an answer to for tonight, and literally, you know, if we need Rick to look at it to make sure that I'm not interpreting this wrong, but that's exactly what the language says on it.
I would say if your interpretation is correct, our agenda item is wrong, and...
Exactly. Well, agenda item's wrong, and the application that I advised him to do is incorrectly proposed to both planning commission and council.
Counsel?
You can't vote to be CN if it's not CN. And he'd have to deny both of them, and then he'd have to go back through the planning commission or bring it back in correct form.
But in this situation, would there be a reissue, would there be a requirement to reissue a fee?
I would make the recommendation of not doing that since it's...
I was going to say, just have me pay it.
Yeah.
See?
I'd make the recommendation you hire a city commissioner.
Well, this does delay things. According to Mr. Strick's comments, he's looking for the future, so if we could have the time to do it right, well, that's what it's going to take. We can't take action on this item this evening, so I apologize.
You still have to take action on the item, though.
We...
You still have a motion to deny.
I think, yeah, I think you need to go ahead and vote on that.
Okay.
So are you ready for that?
I would entertain a motion.
Motion to deny request to change zoning from residential RG8 to commercial neighborhood CN for the demolition of the existing structure, construction of 30 by 40 steel building for a commercial shop at 4 Choctaw Street.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Stelling to deny the request to change the zoning from RG8 to CN at 4 Choctaw Street. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to state for the record that the denial is not due to the zoning change, but because the CN is wrong.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Item 15, same thing, different property. Discussion in action to approve request to change the zoning from RG8 to CN for the construction of a 50 by 30 steel building for project storage at 1024th Street. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to deny request to change the zoning from RG8 to CN for construction of a 50 by 30 steel building project, storage at 1024th Street.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Stelling to deny request to change the zoning from RG8 to CN at 1024th Street. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes. Item 16 is discussion in action of the lease at the East Lagoon site to Kelly Thising in the amount of $510 per year.
So in the June City Council agenda, we have approved the lease for the East Lagoon to Roger Heda. After that meeting took place, he requested that his bids be pulled. He no longer was interested in grazing either the East or West Lagoon sites. Mr. Thising came to me later on and said that he would still be interested in the East Lagoon, so we rebid those two sites out, both the East and the West. We only received a bid for the East Lagoon site for Mr. Thising in the amount of $510 per year.
I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the lease of the East Lagoon site to Kelly Thising, amount of $510 per year.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the lease of the East Lagoon site to Kelly Thising in the amount of $510 a year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right, item 17 is new business. There isn't anything that fits the definition of new business for our consideration this evening. Item 18 is remarks and inquiries by council members. All right, we're adjourned. Next call to order the Alba Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Brooks?
Here.
Beer?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Winters? Dowling?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Martin.
Item 3 is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 19, 2021. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $5,184.60 and payroll expenses of $13,520.28. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Winters?
Item 3 is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on July 19, 2021. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $5,233.44 and payroll expenses of $54,805.82.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item 5 is discussion in action to approve change order number one to increase the
cost of the 16-inch water main replacement project by $26,552.
Yes, apparently no commentary, I apologize. So this was the water line project that we discussed earlier that is finally completed. There were a couple pieces that fed into this increase of $26,552. As you know, the pipe that we used for that water line, we had purchased in 2018, and we knew there was potential some of the pieces wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to utilize. So when we hauled the pipe down from Public Works down to the project area, we had some pipe that when unloading or loading was broken, it had been cracked, and then there was a couple of pieces that were determined when the company was installing it, that it wasn't going to pass the test, whether the seal inside was cracked or something wasn't appropriate. So we had to replace some of it, and then we did have an issue, in a attempt to save a little bit of money, we did not have Myers Engineering stake project for us, the beginning and the ending of the project, and there was some miscommunication. The project began in the right place, but went a little bit further than what we anticipated. And so between the two of those, we had to buy an additional 400 feet, linear feet of pipe, and then we had to pay for the additional installation of the pipe, a little bit of the difference that we had to, the additional length that we weren't anticipating installing. So altogether, we ended up with 16,180 feet of water line.
On the pipe that was damaged with loading or unloading, did the city load and unload it?
Yes, we did, yes.
Are there, are you going to ask a question?
Yeah, well, so we put steps into place to make sure that we don't miss a spaking or something like that.
Yes, yes, we did.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve change order number one, increasing the cost of the 16-inch water main replacement project by $26,552.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Stelling to approve change order number one, increasing the cost of the 16-inch water main replacement project by $26,552. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for your work for the city, and thank you all for joining us this evening. We are adjourned.